Might as well.
Set the play.
Yep.
Was everything a secret?
What's your allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to mix it up, right?
Would you?
Sure. Call the order, city council meeting, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Ms. Nancy, we use call roll. Chris Foster?
Here.
Louis Short?
Here.
Jim Adams?
Here.
Lane Tubbs?
Here.
Melissa Choate?
Here.
Ally Sugg?
Here.
James Lay?
Here.
Sharon Williams?
Here.
Rebecca Prince? The press? And the mayor?
Here.
Let the record show we have a corral. Mr. Lay, it's good to see you back.
Thank you.
Ms. Sharon, I'm glad you're feeling better?
Yes, I'm so glad, thank you.
You can thank Survivor Flight and our emergency room up here. And one of the most thankless jobs in the world's gotta be a nurse, and I'm gonna tell you, I've met some of the greatest nurses.
That's great.
They are good.
Good, good. Okay, let's get started. A motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes of July twenty-first, twenty twenty-two, city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy? Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, a motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve the minutes of July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-two, special city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Nancy? Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Motion carried. A motion to waive the reading of the minutes and approve August first, twenty twenty-two, special city council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Nancy? Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, approve the payments journals from July first to July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two.
So moved.
A second?
Second. Chris can have. Thank you, you're welcome.
Thanks, Chris. Any discussion? Nancy? Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, the street fund financial statement, sanitation, general fund, community center, O and M, and miscellaneous funds dated, uh, July thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy? Sharon Williams?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have supervisor reports, do you have any questions for the supervisors? Okay, I know Brian wanted to address.
Just briefly, I want to make the community for their support through the incident on August sixth. As many of you know, Sergeant Gracie was injured and Deputy Nathan McLean. Both of them are gonna be alright. Sergeant Gracie sustained a wound to his neck and back and the incident. And Deputy McLean had a severe laceration to his forearm and it caused a lot of bleeding. And he's gonna be alright, it's gonna take some time for him, it'll take some time for both of them. They lived through a very traumatic experience and we need to continue to thank those young men in our thoughts and prayers. I wanted to cover just some slight changes that are gonna be happening in our uniforms, so if y'all get questioned about it, I'm changing the outer carriers slowly as money affords it. So there might be a slight alter color change there. Uh, but these outer carriers that we're going to will be able to accommodate a new type of plate that goes inside. Our current plates for rifle, that'll take a rifle round, weigh about eight pounds each, so they're carrying about sixteen pounds of extra weight. Uh, the new ones, as I can buy them, are about one point one pounds. So it's a significant difference. And when you're on a long-term SWAT call out, the boys got called out, uh, the Monday night after, it was Monday night, was it not? Uh, after the, the, the incident on August sixth. So, uh, we're gonna have to start taking care of these SWAT guys a little better and try to get them the equipment they need. So I just wanted everybody to be aware of that if you get questioned about it. The grant money came in for, uh, the local law enforcement block grant that was approved last month. We are buying new body cameras for the officers and finishing out, uh, our patrol units that, that need in car. The, the new cameras held up well, Chris went to ground with the sus- suspect and it came right back on, kicked off for a second, but it came right back on. So that's what we're looking for and durability in an incident. So, uh, any of you got any questions about? I will relea- I will release further on that incident, uh, as the state police investigation concludes. And I want to thank the state police at this time, they did a phenomenal job. Second call, second or third phone call I got that day was the captain saying, what do you need? And I said investigators and they came rolling in. So I just wanted to make notice of those, those officers as well. Cause they took over the scene and took over everything from there on out, so. Any questions, me on that?
Not on that, but on the plates?
Yes, sir.
Those, like, lighter plates, how expensive are, is that stuff?
They're four hundred dollars, uh, a piece.
Per individual, not, not front and back?
No, that's, that's just one, one, I'm working on the fronts now.
Yeah.
And, uh, we will work on the, it's eight hundred dollars an officer, so, like everything else, it costs money, so. They can use their, their heavier plates in the back, we've had a discussion on it with SWAT officers particularly because these, these new carriers, what they'll do is basically, they've got a, and they come out about six months after I bought the, the others. But basically, they can keep those plates in their front seat and if it sounds like it's a bad call, the front just Velcros out and they can drop that plate in. And so they've got that extra protection right there, so, uh, that's why we're, we're switching to them. And, uh, the, the whole system, uh, the outer, uh, part that, that bands the, the front and back plates and carrier, in the carrier, uh, can be changed out for different size officers. So instead of having to buy a whole new outer carrier, we're buying just a, a, a band in there. It costs about forty or fifty bucks, so that'll, that'll save some money in the long run. Okay, anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Brian. Thank you, chief. Okay, next we have Ms. Susan Vowles that wanted to come and address the council.
Good evening, my name is Susan Vowles and I'm the executive director of the Cleveland County Community Foundation. Uh, the Cleveland County Community Foundation is one of twenty-nine affiliate offices in our state. Uh, we are a community-minded individuals that want to help, uh, nonprofit, well, sorry. Our affiliate office is, was established in two thousand and four by community-minded individuals to help meet the needs of nonprofits in our county. We are not state, are federally funded, we are locally funded through endowments and scholarships that were established by families that wanna leave a legacy on Cleveland County. In front of you, I have included a letter that tells about aspirearkansas.org, that is our website. It has statistical data on it that helps not only, um, five oh one C threes, but even government entities such as yourself to look at and pull data to see that is based on the county data that we have pulled. I have also included a flyer, uh, I'll get into that in a minute, and our Engage magazine. It, it's produced quarterly and tells about the different things that are going on in the state right now, this one is on, um, housing. Uh, the Arkansas Community Foundation is a smart, their tag is smart giving to improve communities and the Cleveland County, uh, Foundation is proud to have a local affiliate that does just that. Uh, we use data to be smart about how we give to charities so we can put the dollars in the place that they need to be and have the greatest impacts within our county. This last year, our grants were targeted to food, food security and early literacy. As I said, aspire Arkansas, um, has a county-by-county indicators that helps us decide the critical issues in Cleveland County. There are six pillars to aspire Arkansas, there are education, health, families, community, democrats, and race equality. Uh, for example, if you wanna know the percentage of people with food insecurity in Cleveland County, you could find that percentage, uh, on the website, which we are currently at sixteen percent. Our local board spends time looking, uh, at this to make decisions. Uh, one example is outlined in our latest, um, Engage magazine, it's affordable housing. It's not an issue, not just in Heber Springs, but it's an issue across the state. Uh, while Arkansas is one of the most affordable states to own or rent a house, there is a growing number that are facing significant challenges finding affordable housing, one of the most basic human needs next to food and clean water. In Heber Springs, you can pull another statistic, I can't get it out right now. Uh, seventy-five percent of people that live in Cleveland County own their homes. The Cleveland County Community Foundation invest in, well, I'm sorry, the Community Foundation as a whole invest in organizations such as A Change, it's Affordable Housing Coalition, Habitat and Habitat for Humanity. Uh, Cleveland County Community Foundation is here to keep our local dollars put towards local issues and our funds are set up and invested to be here in our community forever. Right now, you can support this kind of work and make sure that charities are supported, uh, whatever their needs are from fifty years from now or a hundred years, years from now by supporting Cleveland County Community Foundation. And right now, we were not part of a program called Partners back twenty years ago when Walmart dropped funds for, um, community foundations across the state. So our state board has dropped fifty thousand dollars, we have a dollar-for-dollar match going into unrestricted funds this year. And we want to be able to help the local communities in Cleveland County with local issues and our nonprofits that we help every year. These funds, uh, help respond the need to housing, hunger, education, health, or whatever it may be for Cleveland County. Since two thousand and four, uh, the Cleveland County Community Foundation has given out more than six hundred and eighty thousand dollars and has awarded more than two hundred and fifty-two grants. This year, we gave back seventeen thousand dollars to the community through various nonprofits. Do you guys have any questions or anything about what we do? Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Susan.
Thank you, appreciate you, what you're doing.
Okay, I wanna give a quick update about sanitation, uh, since we had put out the RFP and received all of those back. City council and myself, we've done a thorough analysis on the sanitation department to see if we should contract it out or keep it in-house. The result is that we keep it in-house and make some changes. Uh, to efficiently run the department, we will be increasing the rates, which hasn't been done since two thousand and eighteen. Uh, the transfer station has changed the way that they charge the city and the city and we will have to also adjust for that increase. Um, in doing so, this will allow us to purchase or lease, um, two trucks that we desperately need. And as for leaves and limbs, uh, we don't have the proper equipment or manpower to do this efficiently and so we are going to put out an RFP to see if we can contract it out to somebody. And we need to set up another workshop to do all of those extra things. Do y'all wanna go ahead and set a date? If you're waiting, think about it, I'll be out next week.
Wanna do it the week after?
Yes.
Thursday? Tuesday?
Okay.
Which one? Whatever it's for, guys.
Okay.
The thirtieth?
Let's do the thirtieth.
Okay. Wait.
Is that a Tuesday?
Yes.
September thirtieth?
At six?
That works.
Here?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, got it, perfect, thank you.
Work for me.
I did, right, September.
August thirtieth.
That's for sanitation. Workshop.
So we're just, since we're, we're basically coming, putting the RFP together.
Oh, well, we can do that, um, we need to decide on how much we need to go up.
Oh, okay.
And we need to decide if we're gonna lease or purchase trucks. And go over our numbers again to make sure. We can do all of those things. And in saying that, um, the grapple truck lease is up and I misunderstood and Scott would like to keep it, not keep it. I said we wanted to keep it, but we want to do the buyback and lease out a new truck. Did I say that right? Thank you.
That's not what we said, that.
That's right, that's not what we said because I misunderstood, because whenever we say buyback, I got lost. So we want.
Why the change, Scott?
We want the company to buy it back and then us lease a new one and then have the option to purchase the new one in two years.
What about the outstanding one?
Uh, they will buy it back for.
Ninety-three.
Ninety-three thousand and so the difference is six thousand, two hundred and forty-one dollars and thirty-nine cents that we would have to pay.
And who's holding that?
And then leasing.
The Eagle Bank thing after is what, is who's holding that lease?
The, the loan. Yes.
So they'll buy back for ninety-three, we owe ninety-nine, they'll come up with six thousand and then we start with a brand new.
Lease.
Lease.
Yes. Are you guys okay with that?
How does it change our current payment structure, I mean, we still would have to pay on that for what, three more years for the old one?
I think so, yeah, that's what the loan is for.
At about what, forty thousand a year or something like that, thirty thousand a year, give or take?
Yeah.
What's the new one, lease?
The new payment?
Yeah.
Uh, Scott, you know what the new lease payment would be or would it change?
I just wanna know how much the difference is versus what we're paying currently.
We wrote the three thousand and seventy-five.
Three thousand and seventy-five per month.
What'd you say, three thousand eight hundred?
It's forty-six thousand and we're paying what, so forty thousand currently? That's a new truck, you know, made in the room.
No repair is needed, the new one, the thirty-four thousand dollars more.
Sure. Right.
He says, wait, send a new payment, it'll be thirty-eight.
Allow the lease buyback and pay off the note, lease a new one.
Second.
Any more discussion?
Sorry, I'm gonna beat your dis- discussion, apologize to that.
You're fine, we can discuss both times. Thanks, Jim. Nancy? Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams? Lane Tubbs?
No.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have the rezoning ordinance for, uh, the bond for the third reading. Does anyone have that? Awesome.
We can do just the title.
Title, do you wanna do title only?
Yeah.
We have a motion to do it on title only.
Make a motion to read this, suspend the rules in place on third and final reading by title only.
Perfect.
Second, then.
Nancy? Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Motion carried. Jim, can you read that title?
Sure. The ordinance, do we have the ordinance number?
Twenty-two oh nine.
Twenty-two oh nine.
Mm-hmm.
An ordinance amending the zoning map attached there too and for other purposes. And do I have to read the whole thing?
No, just the.
Title only, do I have to keep going?
I move we approve the ordinance.
Second.
Any discussion? Nancy? James Lay?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Motion carried. Congratulations. Okay, next is the, uh, the bid for CK asphalt, this was for the trails. Uh, the actual number is eight thousand. Yes, eight hundred thousand, five hundred and seven, eight hundred thousand, fifty-seven dollars, five hundred and two and fifty-three cents. I think y'all caught that. Um, and I think we just need a motion to change, do we see a motion to change the price? Ms. Nancy? For the actual number?
Yes, we just need to.
Cause we had approved the. One hun-.
One million.
One point two.
Sixty-two.
Yeah. Yeah.
What was the total again?
Really?
Eight fifty-seven, five oh two.
Eight fifty, yeah.
Eight five seven, five oh two dot five three. And that's from Woodland to Seventh Street for the trail. I know.
Me too.
We need a motion to make that change.
I think we.
Should we?
I think we need to put it in the minutes just because last time, it really, everybody talked about the one million, one hundred thousand and he really, he said they're gonna knock this off, knock this off, he never had a total.
Yeah.
I think I need to put the total in here of what really was approved.
So a motion for the total for the.
The total with those adjustments, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Take it from the wooden.
So you want a motion?
Yes.
Make a motion to revise the total for the asphalt to eight hundred fifty-seven thousand, five hundred two dollars and fifty-three cents.
Second.
Any discussion? I know we had taken out, um, we've taken out enough stuff that we, we will be able to fund the next section.
We're basically changing.
So we.
Article three of the other one.
Okay.
Of the previous contract which had one point one six two.
Correct.
Yeah. Ms. Nancy? Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have a tax back resolution for TIG and Holdings and New Terra Company.
Need to read this.
Can I get a volunteer?
I'll read it.
Okay.
Resolution, uh, twenty-two ten?
Yes.
Resolution number twenty-two ten, resolution of the city council of Heber Springs certifying the local government endorsement of TIG Holdings LLC, DBA TIG LLC, a new terror company to participate in the tax back program as authorized by section fifteen four, twenty-seven oh six D of the Consolidated Incentive Act of two thousand and three. Whereas in order to be considered for the participation in the tax back program, the local government must endorse a business to participate in the tax back program and whereas the local government must authorize the refund of local sales and use taxes provided in the Consolidated Incentive Act of two thousand and three and whereas, said endorsement must be made a specific form available from the Arkansas Economic Development Commission and whereas TIG Holdings LLC, DBA TIG LLC, a new terror company located at twenty-two fifty Bolton Sullivan Road has sought to participate in the program and more specifically has requested benefits accruing from construction of the specific facility and whereas, TIG Holdings LLC, DBA TIG LLC, a new terror company has agreed to furnish the local government all necessary informa- information for compliance, now therefore be it resolved by the city council of Heber Springs, Arkansas that TIG Holdings, one, TIG Holdings LLC, DBA TIG LLC, a new terror company be endorsed by the city council of Heber Springs for benefit from the sales and use tax refunds as provided by section fifteen four, two seven oh six D of the Consolidated Incentive Act of two thousand and three. Two, the Department of Finance and Administration is authorized to refund local sales and use tax, use taxes to TIG Holdings LLC, DBA TIG LLC, a new terror company. Three, this resolution shall take effect immediately.
This is the same thing we did for Dark Truck?
Mm-hmm.
So doing a construction project down, down the road?
Yes.
Make a motion, we pass the resolution for TIG.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion? Okay, Ms. Nancy? Jim Adams?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we have, uh, the business license ordinance, has everyone had a chance to go over it? And if we wanna make any changes, I'd like to table it.
Let's look at the fee schedule.
And work on it some more, that's fine.
Let's look at the fee schedule.
Okay.
I wanna, I wanna know why the fortune teller's gotta pay so much more. They should know why.
They should know this.
They should know why, yeah.
You'd ask the fortune teller.
You'd have to ask the fortune teller.
So let's table.
Do you wanna table it?
Yeah.
Okay, no problem. Okay, next up we have two courtesy cars for the airport. Um, one has been wrecked and so Charlie's got, I think, one left. And, um, he really needs a couple of courtesy cars out there. And, um, if you guys wanna set a budget that he can spend. Uh, for two cars.
Well, he has one, right? So doesn't he just need one?
Well, he'd ask for two, but I mean, if you wanna do one.
Well, if we get one more, he would have two, right?
Yeah, mm-hmm.
He wants three.
He's got an old, our old, um.
He's got the SUV.
Yeah.
The SRV.
Yeah.
Oh boy.
What was it before that? The drug? Something, yeah.
Dare car.
Yes, the dare car.
So does he want three cars out there or he wants two cars out there?
I think he would like to have three, but if we wanna start with one.
Does he rent them out or we just?
No, they're just courtesy.
Pilots have access to them and.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. We don't get free cars of anybody else.
Well. Most airports do that.
Yeah. Ideas they come and spend money in town.
Yeah, and pay for gas. But I noticed today it was seven something a gallon at the airport.
Do they?
Yeah.
I would just say one for now.
Okay.
Is the, is the car they have decent enough to get to town somewhere?
And then.
Did you say they asked for the old resource officer car or is it a, run well or do you have any idea?
Trade that car? I think it's still okay.
Still running.
Silver Crown Vic was, was wrecked?
No, it was a different car.
I think we should start with one.
Sure.
We can always buy another one after.
Buy, buy used or, not gonna buy new, right?
No, I wouldn't say used.
But nice.
Yeah.
I mean.
I would just put a number on it.
Yeah, like auction police car or something like that probably would be about that. I mean, that's what it has been historically.
Yeah, I mean, they've got the hand-me-downs historically.
That's, that's what I was saying, get you a little more there and trade there.
What, what can you buy? What kinda car are you looking for?
Do we have any?
He'll take anything.
Ten thousand enough, too much, not enough.
Where are they gonna come from?
I don't.
I, I mean, I don't know what he could get. I, I feel like I need to see like a list of what's available.
Yeah.
Can he get us?
Some kind of proposal.
Yeah, he needs to look.
Well, it's gonna be.
Like how many miles and how much it costs. Like I don't, I don't know if we say ten thousand, if that's enough or if we say like.
And then. I mean, he should bring us a wish list of what it is with a ballpark bucket, right? Like if it's, this is what I was looking at, this is what they go for.
Hunt down a few cars in, in town or with county.
Yeah, but how long are they gonna be available? That's the hard part.
I mean, it's kinda like what you did too with your, the mayor mobile.
Yeah.
Yeah, just say up to X number of dollars.
Well, you showed us the car too, as well on how much it was.
Yeah. You wanna let him shop?
I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, what do you, what do you think he needs?
Sure.
Came up with an idea, yeah, that's a.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll let him go shopping first, then we'll come ask for money.
Yeah, I mean, let him look for what he thinks he needs and, cause I'm sure it's gonna be high mileage, whatever it is, but I don't know what, I don't know what they call it. I haven't car shopped in a long time, so I don't, I don't know.
Yeah.
Occasionally the water department gets rid of one, but usually it's something like a really small Ford Ranger or something like that.
Yeah.
If they're replacing, but that's on rare occasion, no little things last a long time.
Okay. Next we have a resolution to amend the budget for bonus. Okay, who wants to read this?
Okay.
Lane, you did so good on the last one.
Uh, what else is gonna be read?
I was gonna read it.
June twenty-one.
Go speedy.
I just gotta find it, my email.
What, uh, what number? I'm sorry, it's twenty-two eleven.
Want me to start? I'll start. No problem. You ready?
Ready.
Resolution twenty-two eleven. Resolution adopting retention bonus for certain municipal employees from the freed up funds due to CARES Act. Whereas the CARES Act was adopted by Congress in spring of twenty twenty to provide fiscal relief funds to state and local governments and other program areas aimed at mitigating the continued effects of the pandemic and to stimulate the economy and whereas the CARES Act funding as a pass through from the Arkansas Department of Finance Administration authorized local governments to claim public safety expenses normally in the city's budget as grant expenses and whereas the city of Heber Springs reimbursed for public safety expenses in the winter of twenty twenty in the amount of two hundred eighty-three thousand, eight hundred sixty-one dollars and sixteen cents and these funds have been in separate line item in the city budget and have not yet been spent. Whereas many local governments in the United States have issued either premium pay retention bonuses for their employees during the pandemic and whereas the city of Heber Springs desired to offer retention bonuses to our employees and whereas the city of Heber Springs is starting to provide current full-time employees who are active for all or part, or part of the time period March first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one with a four thousand dollar bonus. Part-time employees limited to firefighters will be paid a bonus of one dollar, twenty-nine cent for part-time hours that they worked during the time period of May, March first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one and one dollar, twenty-nine cent for call-off that they worked during the time period of March first, twenty twenty through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. Now therefore be resolved by the Heber Springs City Council that section one, the city of Heber Springs survey appropriates a total amount of up to one hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred three dollars, sixty-six cents to provide bonuses and employer payroll contributions, A P E R S, FICA, Medicare, workers' comp, as required by, by law, employers, employees are responsible for their own state and withholding taxes. Section two, employees shall be paid according to the amount set forth in the appendix A of this resolution. Section three, to be eligible for the bonus employee must be currently employed by the city of Heber Springs as the date of the payments are made. Passed and adopted, uh, up there yet? Okay.
You don't have to read all of the, the pending say.
You don't have to do an appendix A? Oh man.
That's why I said, yeah.
I mean, unless she doesn't want to.
Now it comes down to a grand total of. That one hundred ninety-seven dollars, six hundred three, one hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred three dollars, sixty-six cents.
Yes.
Including all benefits on the employer side.
Sort of.
Well, including all the mandatory taxes, payroll taxes, all that stuff.
Sort of. Zero on retirement on police and fire.
Yes, it's all mandatory.
So, so the, the other people are actually getting, they don't see it in, in their hand, but it goes into retirement. They're actually getting more than the police and fire are.
Oh, we're just looking at retirement for the other, for the rest versus nothing for the.
Yes. Right, now David explained that to me, that lot fee doesn't require that where APERS does, but it doesn't relieve the fact that, that the, the policeman and the fireman are getting less than the other employees. If that makes any difference to you guys. Did I say that right, David? Did I?
Did.
Thanks for bringing that up.
If we were to do that, it would increase the total eight thousand, five hundred seventy-nine dollars and twenty cents.
It's not the same rate. It's not the same rate, Jim.
It's not the six twelve eighty like everybody else.
No.
No, no.
APERS is not anything like boxing.
Yeah, cause that's a, that's part of mer- the part timers and stuff like that.
It's just the difference between APERS and lot fee, right? The retirement program.
Well, it is, but it's still.
It's in various employees for both fire and police.
It's different.
Hour contribution. And the deduction amount from their salary, I think, at least is smaller. To, and, and the fire.
It's mandatory for, for the other ones, but not for lot fee.
It's not allowed for.
Not even allowed on lot fee.
Not even.
Doesn't relieve the fact that we're giving more to the others, but.
It is outside of our control if it's not allowed by law, right?
Yeah.
Unless you wanted to give. Percentage wise, the place and, and the fire more.
Are there certain restrictions on having, on giving out additional for other people versus one versus the other? Down there, well.
I don't know.
I mean, it's all in how the resolution is written. So we'd have to change the whole thing.
Well, we didn't know about that when we released it.
If you guys are all right, I, I am, I did, it's just different. They won't see the difference in what they're receiving, but, but they do end up getting more because it, that goes in their retirement.
So they'll have more for later. Okay, what do y'all wanna do?
I think we, we, we'd require a, a total another month to rewrite it and bring it back up the next time around and it's been a long time already, but. I don't know, it just caught my attention.
Could we not have a short, uh, special meeting when we meet on the thirtieth? Maybe that's a, it's a good idea.
I mean, do y'all, am I, am I nuts for looking at it that way? I mean, is it?
No, I don't, I don't remember this coming up before somebody said something.
I don't, yeah, we never discussed it.
Would we remove the retirement from the others or just add to?
I mean, it's whatever's required by law.
Can.
By law, you'd have to pay into the APERS.
Yes.
And, and, and lot fee will not accept it, but it still comes down to that we're giving more to the other employees and not firing, uh, police. Now, the police are getting that.
Mr. Hales have a thought on it?
Hmm?
You have any thoughts on it?
My thoughts?
Yeah. You don't have to have thoughts if you don't want to.
Uh, you know. I know that my guys are in hard times right now.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, we appreciate the count, I had no idea this amount was coming towards us and, uh, but, uh.
We don't want any good deed going unpunished, so we wanna make sure that if we do it, everyone is the same amount of happy.
It's, it's four thousand dollars, Brian's what it is.
Do what?
It's four thousand dollars is what it is. Is what you, is what you got coming to you on the bonus.
Less your withhold.
Yeah, less withhold, but I, I, I understand that for it, I'm just saying, how much is the difference? Who most belong, I guess.
Each one's, each one's different, but six hundred dollars, uh.
Five to six hundred dollars.
Five to six hundred dollars, for the firemen would be less because it works out to a different percentage because they're, they're set up on part-time.
Government by law, we have to do one and we can't do the other, I don't know how we.
It wouldn't affect the part-time.
Wouldn't affect the part-time at all, they're not in the lot fee.
Because they're paying. They own, but they're paid a set amount per month.
They have a monthly fee.
No matter, no matter what it is.
I got you.
So.
I mean, the policemen are getting that extra thing from the state, maybe it's not a big deal. It just caught me, it's, it.
I think we've given every effort to try to make it as fair and equitable as we can.
Okay.
And this is more of like a legal technicality than a intentional.
Right.
Punishment.
So, so if that's the feeling, then I'll make a motion, we accept it as it is and.
Second. Okay, Ms. Nancy?
Well, will this be on our next paycheck or?
It'll be, it's gonna be separate.
Separate, yeah.
It'll be separate, but it'll be on the same payday.
So, like the next.
The next payday.
Nancy?
Yes.
Could I get a copy of that sometime?
Of the resolution?
Um, the figures.
Oh, the figures, yeah, that just came out.
Who, Sharon did the second?
He's got one.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it just caught me, it's different.
Because we had no idea when we set it up like that, that it would be.
It's, I mean, it's majority.
Well, it's gonna come out either way, if it's required.
We'd have to just adjust.
By law.
We wouldn't be compensating each person for their own individual lot fee comp. It would just be like a generalization of, we give them another four hundred dollars or five hundred dollars extra or whatever.
Right.
To make up for the shortfall.
But, I mean, retirement.
It's really whatever the council wants to do, the goal is for it to be a reward. You know, so if it's a reward but not a reward, if you feel they're getting shorter, then we'd be giving them reward. I'm, I'm okay with it.
Well, they are getting another one from the state that's another five thousand dollars that, that nobody else is getting, so it's not a.
Yeah, well, we don't have control over that. Okay, Ms. Nancy, whenever you're ready.
Are you guys, are you ready good for this?
Yeah, they had a motion in a second. Do y'all want, have any more discussion?
James Lay?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next we have, um, our work orders for our bond projects. And I can't find mine. Thanks.
You want an extra one as well?
Yes, there should be two, right? Nick, is there two?
Yes, there are two different contracts. One, it's, it is your contract for the base. One is the master agreement and then the second is the actual work order with price specific, so in this, in this instance, it's Spring Park.
Spring Park.
This is pretty standard.
Yeah, and I had emailed that over from, from back.
It's a contract, you shouldn't have to.
So, it's the language and all of that, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Hey Nick, do you care to, to give a quick update on where we are just because, like to come up to the.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, just where, yeah, well, Spring Park, where we're at on that and kinda where.
Yes, sure.
Where things at.
Spring Park is, well, it's in front of you right now, so at this point, uh, what you have is the master agreement that would be with ACV and then you also have that work order, which also concludes the, um, guaranteed maximum price. So that's the component we spoke about earlier, so that price is now locked and then once, if you, if you accept that price, uh, that would be the maximum exposure the city would have for the project. Um, at that point, Brian would move to procurement and then if any of the pricing were to come down as he goes through the bid process, then the city would be the benefactor of those savings. Um, and then once that process is complete, then he would move to construction. So.
What's timeline on that? A few months?
Um, I think the lead time on the, the turf is about a month, if I remember correctly. So the longer lead time will be on the, um, the piece of equipment that we're putting in, if, I don't, if y'all remember us talking about that, we have some inclusive piece of playground equipment going in, so I think the lead time on that's a bit longer. Uh, what I've been told is sixteen weeks on that.
Would that have to be put in before the turf or is it?
Uh, that's something, uh, Brian, I don't know if you've looked at that, uh, we're working with the manufacturer, gets management on to see if we can put in the base and everything and bring it above grade and that way they can go ahead and install the turving. We can put some sort of protective padding around that so nobody can fall on it and be injured. And then once the equipment comes in, they just hand place it.
So the forty-five days and the substantial completion is not forty-five days?
Um, well, forty-five days substantially complete wouldn't mean totally complete, I'm just being, we're, where this turf is installed, uh, fencing is all in. I don't know, Brian, if you got any information on the, uh, cause that's, that's Brian's schedule on that. Um, so do you think forty-five days is a reasonable amount of time?
Yes, if, if we procure everything to make sure we had it in there before we start, it's about a forty-five day process.
Any questions on Spring Park?
No, I just know, we get a lot of questions about his, his, if anything, is anything being done on the. No, I just know, we get a lot of questions about is, is if anything, is anything being done on the bonds and all that, and so just trying to.
Get an idea.
Explain the process that you guys are having to go through.
Sure.
On these bonds and, um, all the projects that you guys are doing, so.
Sure.
It's, it's a lot. It's not just like, okay, here we go.
Right, right. Right, right.
So.
Um, yeah, that's Spring Park, you want me to go further on the other projects?
Yeah, I'd love to.
Okay, sure.
On all of them.
Um, so Sandy Beach is done, Brian is actually pricing that one now. Uh, we didn't quite have enough time, or he didn't have quite enough time to get it to this meeting, uh, so we'd actually spoke about it, I don't know, it may be, we'll communicate with Casey and everybody. If it, the thirtieth workshop would be okay, he may have time to have that presented, so these two would essentially be going simultaneously. Um, so as soon as we get some feedback on pricing and see if there's anywhere that we need to do any kind of V or anything like that, as far as, you know, making some revisions to the plan to adjust for any pricing. Um, then we would be ready to do the same process, bring a work order before, and then he would move to procurement. I think he's getting already some quotes from different subs and things like that to nail down some pricing. Uh, so that is Sandy Beach. Um, I think at this point, once all, everybody agrees to this, we're ready to start moving on further to design on the splash pad and all of that, so we're getting really close to that. As far as the community center rehab, we've had, I think I've spoken with most everyone, we're, we're doing a little bit different, um, style process, so. Initially, we had the bond money that was gonna go just totally to the rehab of the community center. Uh, we've since discovered that we can go through the Arkansas Energy Office and we can fund the rehab, most of the rehab that way. And the interest expense is a lot cheaper, so that will be funded at point four percent, uh, rather than the interest rate on the bond, so then we can use the bond funds, uh, to enhance other projects as needed. So, that's, uh, that's where that's at, so we've done the walkthrough, we had seven contractors show up, uh, two subsequent Mondays to do walkthroughs. So, we've got seven energy contractors that are interested in the projects, uh, there's a question period, so they're reviewing all the information that was supplied, which is the energy and natural, or the, excuse me, the electric and natural gas bills, uh, they've got plans of the building, like I said, we've done a walkthrough, so they've got a period of time to uh, get some information together, ask any questions that they may have, and then once that period closes, then they will be supplying proposals. And then it's a, they call it an RFP, but really it's an RFQ. Uh, so basically there will be a selection process, very similar to what we do for any kind of professional service, engineering or construction manager. So, we'll go through them, we'll rank them, uh, if you choose, you can have interviews, and then select the one that best, best fits the need at the time. And at that point, we would, uh, work with them to define a scope, like a, a nail down hard scope of what they would be providing. Um, my recommendation would be on that to set a payback period, cause really, one of the other benefits is to take advantage of some of the operational savings by improving uh, energy efficiency in the building, so, you know, something may be great, it may be a great enhancement, but if it's not paying back for seventeen years and its life cycle is twenty, it really doesn't fit the need, I don't think, I mean, you may feel differently, but I would look at something more in that, you know, ideally it's meeting that five to ten range, so. But that'll be stuff that we go through once we get that hard scope and everything, and then at some point you'll see them, they'll have pricing to approve and all that, so, but that's, that's moving pretty quickly. And that procurement process is mostly administered through the Arkansas Energy Office, which is formerly ADQ. So, they're working alongside us, cause they pre-approve all these contractors, so you know you're getting qualified contractors, I think there's eighteen that are approved to do that type of work in the state. So, they blasted out the email, you know, they're very involved in the process as well. Any other questions on those projects?
And everybody asked about a splash pad, but you touched on it a little bit, you're kinda working through these to see what we got left and might be bigger.
That, that's, that's where, that's where our hope is.
Hopefully it can be bigger than what our plan was.
Yeah, that's, that's been the goal, is to really enhance that project, so.
All right.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you. So, I just need a motion to approve, uh, the work orders for Spring Park.
We need to do them separately?
Yeah, cause we have, the other one's a master agreement.
Make a motion to approve the work order for Spring Park. Just number zero zero one, is that? Work order number?
No, it's not an ordinance.
It's just a contract.
Yeah. It's just to approve the work orders.
Set it, the A two two one?
So.
Yes, okay.
We have to do the master agreement first.
Do that first?
Do the master agreement first.
Okay, well, I got them backwards.
Let me go.
Okay, so.
A one two one dash twenty eighteen.
Second.
Okay, any discussion, this is the master agreement.
Yes.
Okay, Nancy? Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, now the work orders for Spring Park.
That one is.
Eight two twenty.
Make a motion to approve document A two two one dash two thousand eighteen, report it for Spring Park.
Thank you, second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Nancy?
She has a second.
Yeah. James Lay?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Jim Adams?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next, we need to approve, um, our legislative audit. You should have all received it at home. For twenty twenty-one.
Make a motion, we approve the audit.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'm thankful I did not have to go down to Little Rock. Okay, Nancy? Jim Adams?
Yes.
Melissa Choate?
Yes.
Chris Foster?
Yes.
James Lay?
Yes.
Louis Short?
Yes.
Ally Sugg?
Yes.
Lane Tubbs?
Yes.
Sharon Williams?
Yes.
Motion carried. Next up, we have the, um, electric vehicle lease agreement. Uh, First Electric reached out to me to put a electric vehicle charger at the community center. Which I think is a fantastic idea. I just need a motion to approve it so I can sign the contract. I was so moved, did you get that? Go ahead.
So, how, how will the power run, will it be like underground or will it be, you know?
I think it's gonna be underground because the transformer's not far from it.
Cause I, I was reading up on this and it said like it takes thirty minutes to twelve hours to charge. Um, so I was just curious, I don't know, I was looking at where they were proposing putting it. That just seemed like a busy area when we have events and stuff going on, I didn't know if maybe we should look at like a different corner to put it on.
Well, we had looked at this corner on the side parking lot. And she said that since the transformer is located right here by this pole, that that would be the closest, easiest place to get it.
But it looks like if you just went to the end, like the back part, I don't know, it just might be.
Like back here?
I didn't know if that had been.
Like nine spaces.
Considered. Cause you know, in that parking lot's bit, when the park, when people are here, it's usually that front half that is completely full.
They also have the option of adding four or five more. So, it'll be whichever place we put it, they're gonna, they can.
Well, I'll let her pick, cause I didn't know where the transformer was.
I don't know, that just is a busy spot, like there.
Does it last for twenty-five years?
Yeah, for a dollar.
It's a long time.
It's a long time, yeah.
You haven't put it on the back, right?
I guess they're responsible for everything, has anything to do with the placing it.
Yes.
Upkeep.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I think that's a pretty expensive piece of equipment that they're wanting to just put here for.
Yeah.
You know, and, and from what I've read, I mean, these people that drive their Teslas and theirs cars, I mean, they look for places that have these chargers that.
Yeah, and we don't have one in town.
Are they gonna charge for, for her cup or just free?
I imagine first, I think they, they bill, yeah, they. It's all paid through that, like for parking or whatever.
So, they would be making money off of it as long as it's a free service.
And we're allowing them to put it on our property.
Right.
I'm worried, I just think we need to put it in a, the back part of the parking lot instead of the front part where people park a lot. That's just not.
I think you're right, cause it's gonna be low usage at least in the first.
Yeah, so.
Need to tie up the parking spot.
Like back here, maybe this first space?
Right.
That's what, yeah, that's what I was thinking, kinda, yeah.
Especially if they have option to buy two more.
Okay.
To the extent that the installation of the EVSE on leased area results in property taxes being assessed against the property, the owner shall be solely responsible for the payment of all such property taxes. So, if, if it goes up because of that for some reason, it's our responsibility. Typical, I guess, but.
Yeah.
Lane?
Do we pay for taxes?
It just says, it just says if it changes it.
Yeah, I don't think we do.
Uh-uh, we're exempt, we're exempt.
Yeah.
So, everybody cool with leaving it where you're talking about?
Uh, no, they asked to change it to the back.
To the back one?
Yeah.
She wants it closed, cause it's less to dig up and fix lines to put in.
Probably. Right, yeah.
Well, and if, if it's in there, then there's a good chance that that spot's gonna be taken all the time, and if an electric car pulls up, somebody's gonna be there.
Right, that's, I think all of that.
So, it makes sense to kinda use a parking spot there.
Yeah, in the back.
Yeah, where it's probably gonna be open if the electric car pulls up.
Just where you're talking about.
I was thinking there, where there's fun, but yeah.
Here.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, just, I know that spot always has cars in it when there's something going on.
That's no problem.
And then people would pull in because not everybody knows, and then it just, if it's gonna be there for thirty minutes to twelve hours, that's a long time to tie up.
Oh, people are still gonna park there, even if there is, you know, I mean.
So, I thought, a place where people don't normally park is in the back.
It's not as busy.
It's not gonna be, you know.
So, moving it to the northwest corner of the west parking lot.
Okay.
So, it is one dollar.
Yeah.
One dollar lease that they get for twenty-five years at, at least, with the option to add more, and we don't get any reimbursement from their charging customers?
I'd love to hear a proposal or like sit down with them, and that way we could.
Are there?
Hash some of the guy.
Take their brain?
Do people farm these out, like for bid, award this to the highest bidder?
I don't know.
Maybe call Elon.
They're just the first people that came to us.
I just wanna make sure the city's getting the best deal.
Yeah, well, First Electric, they came to us, you know, it's there.
I mean, I agree, we need to have it, but.
Maybe they can re, reduce our, our power bill here because of that. Since we're in the top seventieth percentile for power.
I mean, we're working on that too.
Nick's got some great proposals on that.
Yeah, those are the walkthroughs that we just did. Okay, so I'll get with her and see if we can rearrange that and we'll just table to our.
Yeah, we'll come up for bid.
She wanna come talk on the thirtieth?
Or come do a presentation?
We'll just do a special meeting on the thirtieth, since we have all these table things and.
Yes, thank you.
No problem.
Okay, open mic. Ms. Paula?
You mentioned earlier that you were gonna contract out for leaf pick, uh, leaf and limb pickup?
Limb pickup?
When do you think that might happen, since we got piles all over the place?
Well, we're working on the RFP right now.
We're still picking up, though.
Yeah, we're still picking up.
We're still picking up.
It's just taking a long time.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Anybody else? Okay, announcements, today was the first day of school, but there's some happy parents.
Yes.
I got to wave with the middle schoolers this morning, it was fun. Um, let's see, we got Makers Market coming up and the Clever County Fair, and they're looking for volunteers, if anybody knows anybody that can pass that along.
Oh, Scott?
And football.
Nice job on, uh, Paving Pine Street, just in time.
Just in time or something?
Just in time.
And Patrick Paulfield.
Yeah. That was part of our state street aid funding, they should be almost finished with that. Um, I went to the pre-construction meeting for the airport and they are going to relocate Trailwood Drive, the S curve there at the end of the runway, for the runway safety area improvements. So, if anybody lives down past the airport, it might be closed like one day.
What are they gonna do?
They're extending the runway safety area.
Okay.
So, it's like the threshold, I don't wanna say runway, cause it's not actually the runway.
So, they have to like make it go out?
Yeah, it's gonna extend where the road is now, so they gotta move it over.
So, they're moving the road over to that field?
They're moving the road over to the field, right by my house.
Does anybody miss us that little curve there in her backyard?
They're gonna be in my backyard. Chief?
Uh, the jail, the sheriff's jail committee, you'll be meeting again on the twenty ninth.
Yeah, the public safety meeting?
And I would encourage any councilmen to be there.
Twenty ninth?
It's, it's six o'clock here.
Six P M, yes.
What time?
Six, on the twenty ninth, here at the community center. Do y'all have any announcements? Okay. Motion to adjourn?
Some more.
Second.
Great.